About to begin. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now, a moment of silence for our men and women in the military at home and abroad, for our police and firefighters who protect us here in our community, for the first responders. It's coming up on a year now that they have gone to work every day and they risk getting the coronavirus, but they keep on going. And then finally, for those people who have been hit with the pandemic. Please be seated. Now we'll turn our heads to the executive staff, and we are going to begin with Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Mayor. One thing I'd like to bring up is the last few nights, it's warm during the day and it gets cold at night, and we get icy conditions. Please remember, please remember, we have children on corners waiting for school buses and stuff. Please drive slow. People are also reminded to keep their sidewalks clear, and please drive carefully in this weather. Thank you.
Is that it?
That's it, Mayor, sorry.
Okay. Next, let's turn to Chief. Chief Frisco.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing on the agenda, just reminding again, residents, if you have a big snowstorm, please keep their hydrants in front of the house clear as snow.
Okay. Welcome. Next we would have is Dominic Spanko here. Arin Wu.
Good evening, Mayor. On tonight's agenda, there's a couple of items for the Finance Department. First item is a request to appropriate from the reserve for termination payouts for an employee who left the village service. Item number two are several tax settlements that were provided by and suggested by council. Each one of these settlements are coming in lower than anticipated and budgeted. For this year, the village is seeing a lot less reduction in tax settlements than anticipated. Also, Mayor, I'd like to give an update on the recent sale of bonds and bands that the village incurred. So on February 9th... Yes. On February 9th, the village sold bond anticipation notes, bands, as well as new bonds, and we also had a deal where we refunded previous bonds. For the bands, the village sold $43.1 million of bands. This is for the treatment of the water well, the multiple capital project the village is in process of completing for the village well sites due to the emerging contaminants. There were eight bidders on this sale. The winning bid went to Bank of America Merrill Lynch, who offered a 1% coupon rate with $373,246 in premium. The interest due at maturity, which is one year from the date of sale, so they are due February 18th of 2021, the interest due at that time is $431,000. However, once we net out the premium that was received, the net interest cost to the village for this sale is $57,754, or 0.134%. In my discussions with fiscal advisor, they mentioned that this was a phenomenal sale. For other comparable municipalities, they have not seen such a low interest rate for these types of sales, for bands. For the new bonds, the village issued $6.8 million of new bonds for various village improvements. There were four bidders, with the winning bid going to BNY Mellon Capital Markets, who offered $542,399 in premium. To comply with IRS tax laws, the premium was used to downsize the par value of the bonds to $6,360,000. The true interest cost to the village is 1.417%, with a 23-year maturity. The total interest to be paid over the term of this debt is $1.6 million, so roughly the village will be paying about $73,000 a year in interest. Additionally, the village was able to take advantage of refunding prior bonds that were issued back in 2010, so the remaining five years of this debt was refunded at a favorable rate. This remaining debt was $1,485,000. There were eight bidders, with the winning bid going to Fidelity Capital Markets, who offered $148,714 in premium. And so the true interest cost to the village is 0.26%. So the net savings as a result of this deal was $45,769 to the village.
Very, very fine. Very good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Wu, I just wanted to say, as a finance chair, you and your department have done a tremendous job. To be able to refinance, to save the village money, to get the interest rates that we have, I've been in the finance industry for years, and these rates are tremendous, and thank you. And please thank all the people in your department.
Thank you all. Thank you.
All right. This is Superintendent Giovanni.
This is one question. So you said for 23 years, we're going to pay 1.4%?
That's correct.
Great job.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I have one item on the agenda, permits, number 13. Just wanted to give the board a recap on two inspections I performed yesterday, we were there, and this morning we were there, and basically the renewal of the permits for Red Bull. We can reinstate that.
Oh, good. Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson, for doing that.
Yes. Let's see, does that cover all of the executive staff there in the audience?
There was Ralph.
Okay, Ralph.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. Item number three on the agenda is transfer of funds, $20,000 to sanitation part-time help from contingent. The sanitation department's been hit especially hard this year with overtime due to quarantine and COVID-related outages. We had storm sewer overtime. There's approximately $1,600, but I put a little more money here just in case for the end of the year, it's an unusual occurrence over there. Building department, materials and supplies, $2,000. Item D under three is for $40,000 to street lighting. We've been hit very hard this year with a lot of markouts, electric markouts, I think mostly due to the PSCG project. The October bill is $17,000. The January bill, however, is $9,000, been trending down. So for the remaining four months of the year, I want to put initial $40,000 in there, if it stays at $9,000, and hopefully it'll come in less, but that's what that transfer for. Item number five, as you know, the board approved last year the development of the overflow parking at the Stewart Field complex. As we proceeded down toward the completion of that, we were contacted by Mr. Poplick of the Long Island Motor Parkway Preservation Society. He and Mr. Velaci would like to donate to the village nine of the original motor parkway concrete posts. There are still some at the site, but these were saved at another location along the path, and so this is recognized that donation. Also, there is some ribbon wire that goes between the posts that will come in as well. The approximate value of that donation is $800, and I just want to thank them for this donation. It'll be a nice addition to that space once we get things there, you know, get in place. Item number eight. As you know, we had a capital project to replace the fire department doors here at headquarters this year. The project was completed, but the project included putting some new raw wood on there that wasn't anticipated. We want to get that raw wood painted to preserve it, so there's change orders for that painting, and once this is done, that'll close this capital project. Item number nine is acceptance of a maintenance bond for the stabilization work related to the West Door construction team. Item number 10 is acceptance of a maintenance bond related to the Stewart Field additional parking area. I'd like to remove item 11. Mayor and trustees, this could resurface on the March 11th agenda, the next board agenda. There are some items I want to go over on this with Peter Beestill, our village attorney, so I'd like to remove that completely. Item number 12 is the purchase of two tow behind lead pickers. These came in a little higher than we originally expected. They were budgeted $90,000 last year, so we need your support to pay $103,105.25. The good news is that the funds are available in the capital budget because we've saved approximately $75,000 in other purchases, through the other capital purchases that were at higher prices that came in lower. So it's paid for out of the same budget line, there's no additional money here. I'll take any questions.
Any questions on the agenda? Oh, yes.
Oh, there are a couple items for this rose and black, yes.
Thank you, Mayor. There are a couple items on the agenda related to human resources. The first one is in regards to the Village of Garden City Deferred Compensation Plan. The Deferred Compensation Committee has been working with our financial advisor, Centurion, over the past year to issue an RFP for new administrators, as well as to modernize all the documents that make up the bylaws and investment policy for that committee, and we are happy to announce that we've determined that our current provider nationwide has come in with a new engagement arrangement for the employees of the village for the deferred comp plan that is going to save the participants about $300,000 on an annual basis. So what I'm asking for you to do is to authorize these documents, the agreement in substance of the agreement, as well as the other documents for the deferred comp plan to go into effect upon this adoption, and will be everlasting until additional changes need to be made. The second item is for their several ADP agreements. We are nearing the end of the ADP Workforce Now Implementation Project, and one of these things that is before you is a five-year agreement with ADP for their services, in which the first three years were kept at a 0% interest or 0% increase. The third year had a 1% increase, and then the final two years of the agreement were again at zero. So it's essentially a flat agreement for five years. There's also an agreement to do an optimization review of what the implementation has led to date, to make sure that we are utilizing all aspects of the system that would benefit the village and the employees. Then there is an agreement for additional time clocks that will be installed throughout the village to aid in the time in attendance, and we're also moving to a different time in attendance system than was originally identified due to some complications that we've noticed in our implementation. This will be a better product for the village and its employees.
Very good.
Thank you.
What, someone wants to ask a question?
No, whole plate. Whole plate has been recorded.
Ah, okay. Go ahead, Paul.
Good evening, Mayor, trustees, and all in attendance. Nice to be here this evening. My creation has nothing on the formal agenda tonight, however, under information only, you'll notice that we have three bids being renewed at last year's price, as one is for ball field conditioner, the other two are for balls, annuals, and perennials, and other than that, it's just nice to be back with you all this evening.
Good to hear your voice, Paul.
Good to hear you. Nice to hear you, Paul.
You're most welcome.
Thank you all, Arin Wu. I appreciate that.
All right, so now we go back to the move back, and we will ask the trustees if they have any questions or comments or things they would like to discuss.
I just wanted to make one additional comment, which I didn't have an opportunity before because I didn't think of it. Mrs. Wu, you talked about the bonds that we've issued, they were for 1.4% for 23 years, correct?
Yes.
Just to give the average resident some reference, the 10-year, the 10-year bond today trades at 1.35%. So we're going out, not 10 years, 23 years, and we are only paying .05% more than the 10-year. That shows the kind of work that you did. Excellent.
Okay. Yes. Do you want me?
Trustee Donnie, I'd like to mirror those comments, but maybe add on a little bit. I think the results of these bond issuances and refinancing from yesterday or today, oh, I'm sorry, a week ago, is third-party validation that we know what we're doing in the village. We've been very good at managing our finances. We've, you know, gotten and kept our AAA rating, but it's more than that. They know what we're doing. They see what plans we have. They know what we talk about in terms of future plans, and I think these results just validate what we've been doing and trying to do. So I think the village deserves some plaudits for keeping this in place and keeping things going at very low cost for a while. Secondly, I want to talk about is more general, and it's regarding water. I've been hearing there's lots of commentary on social media, and regrettably, I think some people aren't paying attention to things this board and our water department and village administrator and our experts have been saying for two years plus now. So I just want to kind of repeat what we've said in the past, and hopefully people hear it, listen, and read, and see what's going on with the water. You know, there's a lot of misstatements and misinformation on social media, as is often the case, so I thought it was important to say this, and I'm going to ask for permission from the board to allocate some funds so we can put out a written statement. Kind of mirrors what we've said in the past, and we can do a little adding on to it, but send it to every resident in the village so they get correct information. So if I could, and I apologize it's a little lengthy, but I'll try and shorten it. Anyone in the village who's arguing that the village has ignored these issues regarding emerging contaminants and trying to put a spin on this issue for apparently their own self-interested or misguided purposes? As we have stated for years, New York did not even address these issues until early 2020, and even now, the water industry is still experimenting with different technologies to address how we remove emerging contaminants. We point out here that many commentators and scientists in the area of water quality didn't even identify the issue and started referring to them as emerging contaminants only in 2018. Again, that is background. The biggest thing I've heard lately is, why aren't we tying into the New York City water system? That'll solve all our problems. That's incorrect, and it's missing important information. In 2019, at one of our meetings, we had our consultants, including Mr. James Roberts from H2L, who spent 34 years working for the New York City Department of Environmental Protection, which is in charge of the New York City water system. His last 10 years at the DEB were spent in charge of the water supply and delivery system for New York City's in-city water system. He was a deputy commissioner. Quite frankly, in my opinion, he's far more qualified to address this issue than anyone making posts on this topic on social media. Residents would be benefited from listening to Mr. Roberts. I'll repeat what he told us back in 2019, and again, I'm hopeful we will mail this and update it and send it to every resident in the village. He is on the call, by the way, I think, isn't he, Mr. Swazie?
Yes.
Anyways, let me summarize. So as he was prompted at our board meeting, again, in 2019, he addressed the idea of whether the village would be able to obtain water from New York City. The takeaway, there's a theoretical solution involving massive technical, monetary, and political issues. None of them could be solved in a year, or two years, or three years, or five years. Let me summarize some of these issues and problems. Even if New York City were willing to do so, the infrastructure and technical issues would require millions of dollars, who would pay for this, by the way, and it would take years to implement. The existing water system in New York City is designed to deliver water to that geography. Extension of the delivery infrastructure beyond the Nassau County line would require study, investment, improvements, agreements, and would likely take years to execute. It would be subject to extensive environmental and land use review by all those involved, and would likely trigger a comprehensive planning effort. The changes would require upgrades or new systems to reach Nassau County, let alone Garden City, including new infrastructure to three or four other villages. It would have to be put in place a new water pipeline to supply us with water for the New York City system. New York City, it puts fluoride in its water supply. Nassau County does not allow fluoride in its water systems, and that would include Garden City. That would have to all be negotiated and worked out. It's unlikely New York City would enter into any unconditional agreement to provide potable water to the village. It's reasonable to expect that in the event of a drought or catastrophe, the city would be compelled to serve its people first and reserve the right to cease supplying the village. Thus, we would still be required to maintain our own water system as a backup and keep it working, and in compliance with state and local health standards, including the cost of treatments for emerging contaminants such as 1.4 dioxide. So tying into New York City system would not save us any money. Again, the village and the board are working hard to resolve this problem and solve it. It's for our own benefit for every resident. We expect all of our wells to be in compliance probably within six to nine months, if not sooner. Several of them are already in compliance, and we will continue these efforts. Thank you. I just wanted to say that because there's so much misinformation in the accuracy floating around out there. And again, I would ask that the board, we go off agenda and accept a motion to spend, let's just say $5,000, to make sure a proper statement gets sent to every resident in the village.
Mayor, I'd like to move that we spend up to $5,000 to, again, send out this water information so that our residents have complete information and knowledge. This water report that we had...
Mayor, may I?
Look, we first need to...
Is there a trustee who wishes to make a motion to suspend the rules for the purpose of adding this item to the agenda?
I'll suspend.
Move by trustee Donnie, seconded by...
By Foley.
Trustee Foley. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And it is unanimous, and therefore the rules are temporarily suspended for the purposes of adding this item to the agenda.
Peter, sorry, I'd vote against that. Just, I don't think...
My apologies, trustee. I forgot you were behind me. My apologies. Okay, so the vote's voted against. The trustee, would you go ahead?
That was my fault, sorry.
Yeah, I don't know why they muted me, but I'm not on Facebook. I know a lot of the political party there, they speak to themselves a lot, and I'm not so sure responding to the lies that they're putting out there is really worth 5,000 bucks to me. It's my point of view. I understand that the other seven trustees feel compelled to send it out, but I don't feel the need to dispel what they're saying, because I think they mostly talk to themselves. That's my own point of view, and that's why I'm not voting for it.
Very good, sir. However, were you unanimous in suspending the rules so that the item could be considered?
Yes, I was.
Okay, so the unanimous vote stands with respect to suspending the rules temporarily. The item now before you is a motion to authorize the expenditure of $5,000 and to make any necessary transfer of funds that that would require in order to deliver this material in the form of distribution to the public.
And if I could add, just to Lewis's point, I totally understand what you're saying. It's incredibly frustrating to consistently be fighting falsehoods and lies and rumors, but I just feel it's important to address them, at least sometimes, and this is one of those things I think is important.
The motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll take the motion.
Seconded by trustee MacRinos. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing, no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I oppose.
And the motion passes.
All right.
Now we have to go back to the regular meeting, right?
Yes, we do.
Yes, we are in regular meeting. That was an add-on to the agenda.
Okay.
So now we're going to move to the first public hearing. Opposed?
Ralph, do you have something, Ralph? The citizens' comments on agenda items.
I'm going to do that right before we move to the consent to get agenda. All right. Members of the board, is there a trustee who would like to open the public hearing on opposed local law regarding parking non-operational vehicles in residential districts?
Mayor, are you taking the public hearing then out of order for citizens' comments on agenda items?
Oh, thank you, I am. Can't do that. All right, now we're going to have citizens' comments on agenda items. Only. Okay, can you see?
Steve Alardi.
Okay, Mr. Alardi. Mr. Alardi?
Steve, you're breaking up. $40,000 for the electrical work that costs us. Hello?
Say that again, Steve, if you're...
Say that again.
If I could hear you. Steve, start over, nobody heard what you said.
Steve, can you hear me? All right, we're going to have to move to the next speaker. Is there another speaker?
I just... $40,000 for the electrical work.
So, Mr. Alardi, I'll try to answer you now. I think you're asking about 3D, which is the anchor electric transfer. If I'm incorrect, you can call me tomorrow at my office, I'd be happy to talk to you more. But basically, when people need to break ground to excavate for any projects, mostly utilities, but you know, even for contractors doing roadwork, they have to call for markouts, they call 811. That burden falls on municipality to go out and provide those markouts. The electric markouts, especially this last year with all the utility work, and I will identify the PSCG work because that was very intense, and it traversed from Cherry Valley all the way down to Past Clinton. These markouts were extensive. The law was changed, I believe, last year that requires the markouts to be renewed every 10 days if they have not been utilized. So it's something we just couldn't do in-house, so we turned to our professionals, anchor electric. It's one of the items in the big contract with them, and the cost has been extensive. That project ended on December 8th, and we can see now that the bills from December through January are trending down from the high in October of $17,000. I think there were 11 in November, 11 in December, and there are nine in January. So projecting that trend outward to the end of the year for February through May, we put another $40,000 in there. I am hopeful that we will use less, but nonetheless, it is a responsibility of the village when markouts are called for.
Is there any way we can seek reimbursement from that, from any departments that we issue?
I don't think the utility itself, I can reach out to the utility, see if there's any reimbursement. I don't believe it's part of their project or their funding. I did actually want to talk with our engineers about maybe some of the holes that result in these markouts. Maybe the fees should be increased somewhat, but I don't think they can increase substantially enough to compensate for the amount of markouts because they lose you over a long stretch of linear fee. So it's, you know, the markouts go well beyond the permit costs, but it's something we can look at from a fee adjustment.
Next speaker?
Mayor, can I speak?
Yes.
Leo Stilman. Mayor?
Yeah.
Can I hear you? If it's an agenda item.
Agenda items.
Leo Stilman, Huntington Road.
On the agenda items.
Agenda items.
Isn't it agenda item?
Well, trustee Donnie added the drinking water to the agenda, so I'd like to comment on that, what he said.
Go ahead, Leo.
Hi, Leo.
Okay, my comment is, who's better at safeguarding our drinking water? And there are some major differences between the community agreement party and the recently formed FABGC when it comes to safeguarding Garden City's water. To comply with Governor Cuomo's new water standards that were just enacted last July, the trustees, including Deputy Mayor Bob Bolabrook, trustee Stephen Macrinos, and trustee Mark Hyer voted to spend millions of dollars to remove 1.4 dioxide from our water supply. In contrast, it appears to me that Mr. Venizali, Deputy Mayor Bolabrook's opponent for mayor, has become a disciple of Nick Rigano, who he describes as, quote, "a prominent environmental attorney" in the January 29th issue of the Garden City News. What Mayor Candidate Venizali neglected to mention is that Mr. Rigano is suing the New York State Department of Health in an effort to overturn the new state standards for 1.4 dioxide. Well, why is he doing that? Well, instead of spending millions of dollars to remove the contaminant, Rigano wants Garden City connected to New York City water supply, as trustee Donnie said. According to Mr. Rigano, New York City water is cleaner because it comes from upstate reservoirs, in contrast to Long Island's aquifers that he said have been impacted by industrial waste. On September the 19th, 2019, our trustees invited experts to evaluate Rigano's proposal, and they said, quote, "There are technical, there are monetary, and there are political problems with the New York City water plan." And as trustee Donnie said, what, for example, happens if there is a drought and New York City cuts off the water supply to Long Island? The truth is, even if we were to connect to New York City water, we would still need to remediate our current water supply. There is also the issue of time. Mr. Rigano's proposal, even under the best conditions, would take years to complete, as trustee Donnie mentioned. Meanwhile, the installation of the AOP remediation system began last year and has been completed in more than half of the village wells. And I urge you, if you're in for more information, check the Garden City News dated September 27th, 2019. Now, what concerns me is that the Dow Chemical Company, the company that manufactures 1.4 dioxide, is being sued for contamination cleanup costs by more than two dozen Long Island water providers, including our own Garden City, who allege that the chemical manufacturer knowingly allowed 1.4 dioxide to gloat the drinking water. Now, what I find very strange is, instead of joining this lawsuit and pursuing Dow Chemical, which is what the village has done, Mr. Venizali's prominent village attorney, Nick Rigano, is receiving funding for his suit against the New York State Department of Health seeking to overturn the 1.4 dioxide regs. His organization is being funded by no other than Dow Chemical. And I guess perhaps it's cheaper for them to connect to New York City water than to cover the cost of remediation. And I ask anyone who has any question about this, check Newsday, December 11th, 2020, and the Wall Street Journal, December 29th, 2020. If Mr. Rigano's lawsuit against the New York State Department of Health is successful, Dow Chemical might not be held responsible for their actions, and the cost of paying for the remediation of the 1.4 dioxide will be left to the taxpayers. It is troubling to me, very troubling, that Mr. Venizali didn't include all this information about drinking water in his January 29th communication to the Garden City News. Talk about a lack of transparency. So I want to say on Tuesday, March 16th, I'm voting for Deputy Mayor Bob Bolabrook, trustee Mark Hyer, trustee Stephen Macrinos, and candidate Yvonne Verano, and candidate Rich Catalan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hi, I just wanted to clarify, um, was, I came in a few minutes later, the Garden City Police Rebenchment Pursuit of two executive order, 203 from the state, was that, is that on the agenda for tonight?
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Could you state your name, please?
Yes, it is.
I just, so that if I can make comments now or I need to make them later?
Wait, it's a public hearing.
There's going to be a public hearing on that item, but that public hearing has not opened yet.
Oh, okay, it was on the website for tonight, that I can make my comments later?
Yes.
It's tonight, then, I just wanted to...
It is tonight, you just have to wait till we discuss the public hearing.
It's just a formal discussion, which is signified by the mayor opening a public hearing. Thank you.
Next speaker?
Bob Oros, Kansas City. Bob Oros.
Hello?
Okay, can you give your name and address?
George Salem, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Um, last week, three days apart, I received in the mail two different notices from the board of trustees relating to the quality of Garden City's drinking water. The first one was a glossy four-page document discussing Garden City's ongoing upgrading of their water wells. In effect, it was a progress report that I would consider rather bland and merely descriptive in nature. Second document, of two pages, was a bit scary to me, anyway. It stated that pollution chemical levels in Garden City's water was above New York State acceptable levels. But it also stated there was no significant health risk, and water was safe to drink. I don't know what the word "significant" means in that context. The memo also stated that Garden City has received the deferral of the deadline to correct the pollution to meet the new state standards. So here are a couple of comments and observations. How did it happen that these two documents were sent to residents so close to each other in time? They seem to relate to the same subject, but yet two documents appeared. Secondly, document number one did not mention the upcoming extension of time given Garden City could bring water quality up to state requirements. Thirdly, the contaminants 1.4 dioxide and PFOS have caused cancer in animals and the village, and the village extension of time to meet new state standards is May of 2022. So I asked the question, was the village aware of the high pollution level that the latest tests revealed, or was it a surprise? Will we be able to meet the 2022 deadline? And would you recommend that our residents, for conservative reasons, shift to bottled water or the reverse osmosis method of purification, which I have spoken my own? Thank you.
I'll take that, Mayor. Mr. Salem, this is village administrator Ralph Swazie. We've been, this village has been engaged since the state's first acknowledgement of this emerging contaminant in December of 2018, very late in that year, as they proposed recommendations of a level that they eventually set and took effect in August of last year. This board and this village took that recommendation and that concern to heart immediately by declaring emergency, by authorizing bonds, and we immediately set about designing with our agent of consultants the only system available under New York State law to treat AOP. It's a Canadian company, and we went about purchasing and had in our possession all the equipment needed, the vessels, the reactors, everything needed to build and treat the AOP systems. As Mr., uh, I'm sorry, I've got, Mr., uh...
Simler.
No, before...
Simler.
Simler, right, as Mr. Simler mentioned, out of our 10 wells, five already have the systems in place. We're waiting for final approval from Nassau County Health Department on two of them. We're waiting for final testing on two other ones, but we have five in place. Right now, all the water being pumped out of the, into the system, we're using five wells during the slower winter season. All of them are below the maximum contaminant level of 1.1 part per billion, that's a status issue. When the AOP treatments come online, they should go to zero, or what is known as non-detect. So, we didn't create the dioxide problem, we reacted to it immediately, and in fact, much faster than most of the communities around us in the same boat. We are advancing the treatment as quickly as possible. There's a schedule published on the website under Water and Suit Department. Now, as far as the letters going out, every two weeks, every board meeting, I've been updating, since I've been in charge of water since November, we've been updating the public, and every couple of weeks, things have changed. And so the board decided to put out one comprehensive piece on progress. Back in November, November 23 specifically, I put a deferral application into New York State Health Department. I had to get it in by 25th, I got it in on 23rd. And what that deferral letter does is allows us to be compliant as late as May 25th, 2022. We have every intention of meeting the deadline for this summer's pumping season, but the deferral letter, whether it exists or not, the AOP treatments that we're building are on a very aggressive schedule, and they will go online immediately. The deferral letter just allows me, if I'm two weeks late with one well, and I have to turn a well on and put water into the system for a fire emergency or anything else, that I'm not out of compliance. But the fact is that the deferral letter, whether it's there or not, the AOP treatments are being put on as fast as they can. The timing was that once I got the approval for the deferral letter, I had 30 days to put the notice out. It happened to coincide and overlap with the other piece, so it wasn't architected that way. And one of the reasons the letter, I know the letter alerted a lot of our water customers, 10,000 water customers, it reads very factual. The reason, it was given to us by the state, the template, they don't give me the power of authorship because if you had every water provider authoring their own letters, they'd all come out different. They might not say what the state wants them to say, so they write it for you, basically. So it's very factual, it's very direct, there's no room for unnecessary words. It's just a coincidence that it came out within days of each other.
Can I just comment on what you just said? You said we're below the standard, but yet the notice says we follow the standard.
Because when, you have to understand, this is not, this is like, you don't turn a ship on a dime. When the state came out with this water quality committee, and they asked all New York State water providers to test for this emerging contaminant, those tests proved that in our 10 wells, we had six or seven of them that were over the limit. So, the letter doesn't tell you when that test happened and all the ensuing activities that followed it. So it's telling, we're in this position now because when they asked the testers, we did, and because we had, we were over the 1 part per billion, we had to come up with a remedy. By the way, the deferral letter application I put in back in November, and now we got approval for on January 7th, is recognition by the state, they would only give it to you if you were actively putting together a program to eliminate the dioxide and that you had a schedule. So, that, the deferral letter, while it has sent out to everyone, it might seem a little scary, it's recognition by the state that we're doing everything they asked us to do. We absolutely don't even have a choice. We only have one AOP treatment available to us in New York State. We've implemented it, we're working like a dickens to get it to breaking at speed. We have great engineers, these guys work in weekends and evenings, and we are really right on top of this thing. I expect to have all the water treated by the high pumping season.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next speaker?
Ralph Swazie.
Please give your name and address. Is there a next speaker?
Dennis Donalde, on 41 Meadow Street.
Go ahead.
I would just like to thank Mr. Gianelli, Mr. Stankano, and Administrator Swazie for working so diligently with the restaurant owner to complete the outstanding items that he had to get done for his approval. So that was it, thank you.
Thank you, that's very nice.
Thank you, Dad.
Oh, uh, Mary Hearn?
Yes.
Go ahead.
This is Mary Flanagan, 64 Harvard Street.
Go ahead.
Good night, Mary, go ahead, Mary.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clear up, I am one of the FabGC candidates, I think most of us are on the line, and I just wanted to clear up, there seems to be some misconception as to any position. FabGC has not taken a position on the water treatment issue or decisions made by the village. I, for one, I think all of us recognize the complexity of the issue. What we have had is one of the cornerstones, really, of our campaign, is the issue of transparency. And I believe, and Mr. Simler, I don't think Mr. Venizali was saying that was his lawyer, he was just recognizing him as a resident lawyer with expertise. And the, what came up on social media, I believe, what I saw at least was brought up by a resident who I don't think has anything to do with FabGC, as far as I'm aware, although she may be a supporter, who was just concerned, I think it was the letter that went to residents that triggered social media, not anything from FabGC. As far as FabGC and our issues, the transparency issue, that would be just limited to what was said. And I was alarmed when Mr. Rigano's, you know, when I read in the Garden City News in 2019, what happened, and I believe that's resurfaced, but that does not go to the issue of what the village is doing, decisions made, and the path we're on of water treatment. That's not something I or any of the candidates have taken any position with or criticized the village on. Just wanted to make sure that was clear for everyone.
Well, with all due respect, Mary, this is trustee Bolabrook. The one comment that I did see was by Cosmo, who made it very clear that based upon all the comments that were made and the facts that Mr. Rigano was touting is that there should be a complete investigation of what the village had been doing. And this is a topic that we have communicated to our community more than probably any single topic that we have done. As I have stated many times, this village is easily a year ahead of almost anyone else out there. We hired the best experts in the country. We did so many things, and Mr. Swazie has been working to work all of the things. Now unfortunately, in coordination with all the things we'd be doing with the well, yes, a lot of people sit there and they see the discoloration, they see the filters, and a lot of that also has to do with the brand-new water tower that we're putting in and to where we have to tap in to other communities to share the water with them. So, yes, so I agree that none of you said anything directly, except, Ms. Cosmo did come out and did post and say that with all of this that's going on, that there must be an investigation into what's going on. And this is not right, because this is basically trying to mislead the residents that this board has not been addressing this topic, and this is just not fair, it's not right. We've put articles in newspapers, we've sent flyers out, we've done reports, we've had discussions, we've had experts come to board at trustees meetings. So to say that this board has not been on top... So, to say that this board has not been on top and ahead of the curve on this over the last three years is just not telling the truth. And this, and this should not, or transparent, and this should not be some issue, we can agree or disagree on whatever topic we want, and I realize that we're running for the same positions, and I respect you for that. But this is a topic which all of us, you know, are affected. And one other thing, everyone keeps telling and talking about, you know, I drink the bottled water, or I, I would never drink tap water, first of all, I drink Garden City water every single day, but let's make something clear, which was also discussed, all of the water that you get, if you go out and you buy your Poland spring water, or you go and you buy the, the big tanks that you put in your house, they're all in plastic bottles, I hate to tell everyone this, the plastic bottles have 1.4 dioxide. So, what happens if either they get frozen or if they get too hot? The 1.4 dioxide comes out of the plastic into the water that you drink. Now, of course, everyone says, well, I keep my water fine. Really? Do you know that the pallets that you bought in the store, they'd be sitting in some warehouse in 90 degrees? So, the reality of it is, is that we're aware of all of this, and it's frustrating to us as a board, forget about the candidates, okay? It's frustrating to us as a board that we have communicated this to our residents over and over and over again. And this should never, as I stated on, on the website, should never be an issue that is brought into this election, because this is, there's nothing that we've done.
That falls, I, I gotta say, you can't say this isn't a FabGC thing when you're candidate, when you're running as a block, and you're candidate for mayor side with the guy who's secretly working for Dow Chemical, the guys who make 1.4 dioxide. I'm sorry, that, that holds very little weight, sorry about that.
Yeah, I don't think there's any criticism of that, Mr. O'Ryan, but as far as the, and I think that-
You guys are running as a block, and your mayor's-
Your congressman's secretly working for you. They're not-
Folks, let's stop, let's stop.
Yeah, here, for being talked over here, I'll let it go, I was clarifying our position, and as far as Mr. Regano's statement and transparency, I think it's a serious one, and I don't know if that's what was being referred to in the post, I don't think that-
All right, let's, let's move on to the next speaker.
There's, there's no transparency issue, let's, let's be, yes, quite frankly. We've put this out there many times, we talked about this many times, we had experts here, if you guys had bothered to come and sit in the meeting, you would have seen it, there's no transparency issue, that's a false issue, and I won't accept that.
All right, that's it. Next, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. I'm moving on to the next speaker. The next speaker, come forward.
Tom O'Brien.
Bob O'Ryan. Bob O'Ryan's been waving his hand for five minutes.
All right, Bob, Bob, go ahead.
You gotta unmute, Mr. O'Ryan.
Mr. O'Ryan, unmute yourself.
Yeah, unmute yourself, Mr. O'Ryan.
Okay.
Okay.
I'd like to have some clarification, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. But the clarification, and I'm trying to understand, is acceptance of the maintenance bond on number nine by West Star Construction. Point is, was the contract for the new stabilization of St. Paul? First of all, my first question is, is what it's saying here, was the contract, it means that stabilization is over, is that correct?
No, that's not what it's saying, Mr. O'Ryan. The stabilization project is, has multiple contractors working on it, but as far as West Star's work is complete, is concerned, they've completed what they were contracted to do, so they're putting a maintenance bond, which is in effect for at least 18 months on their work, although the stabilization project overall is still continuing.
All right, good, the question is, how much, how much would they pay for their stabilization job?
I'm sorry, Mr. O'Ryan, I don't have that information at hand, I just know what they did on the, the last piece they did was the change order, last meeting, where the collapsed floor was repaired for $32,000, but I don't know what the earlier amounts were, I don't have it at my fingertips, I'm sorry.
And you're saying, why are we accepting only 18 months?
Actually, it used to be 12 months, but when Trustee Dorn was mayor, he asked us to increase it to put the contractors, you know, put them, I'll use the word on the hook for lack of a better word, for a long retirement period. 12 months is typical, we went with 18 months, it's, it's, it's a very good term.
And you know, why haven't they kept 18 months?
I'm sorry, sir.
I mean, it worked, in other words, they work, you know, all of a sudden, the, whatever they work by, and then the floor comes out and it's back in the basement again. What do we do then? We just hire somebody, do it, do it all over?
So, it's a hypothetical question, Mr. O'Ryan, I just had to tell you that, the workmanship of West Star and the dealings I have with them both at St. Paul's and other projects is very good, they're a very good company, but at some point, you can't keep people at bay indefinitely for multiple years, 18 months is a, I think 12 months is a standard, and 18 months is significant, I would defer Mr. Chivinello, is that true?
That's correct.
All right, so, we are protecting the village, and it's very unusual that we even have to call on the maintenance bond, in the seven plus years I've been here, we've never had to do it, and in my 14 years in government, I've never had to call on the maintenance bond, the contractors stand behind their work, especially that, we'll keep eye on them.
And, and, just for telling, why, who came up with the amount of $740,000? Seven, 740,000?
It's a contract work, man.
Who came up with that amount?
It's a contract.
I don't have the documents in front of me anymore than Mr. Swazi does, but generally speaking, the maintenance bond is equal to the contract amount.
Yes.
Also, that the maintenance bond expired does not necessarily preclude litigation against the underlying contractor.
Now, I had to say, too, that this is like subsidized or whatever, or backed by insurance company?
Yes, that's the, when we say maintenance bond, what happens is that the vendor, the contractor, is required to get the security of, for lack of a better term, an insurance company that will guarantee that if the vendor doesn't do the repair work, then the insurance company will step in and pay for it.
Okay, so, and who pays the, the insurance company, is it the vendor?
The vendor.
The vendor, okay, I, I didn't, I, I guess we need to educate, and this body responds like this, that I did, you know, it's a little deeper, it's a larger, and I did so, and I paid for it.
All right.
And hopefully it'll do it.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Ryan. The next speaker.
Tom O'Brien, by name.
Your address, your address.
The agenda items, Mayor.
48 Chassat Street, Garden City.
Go ahead.
And, nice to be with everybody. Paul Blake, good to hear your voice again, welcome back. I just wanted to echo what Mary Flanagan had said, because I think she hit a right mark on, on our position. It's a very difficult situation when this comes to the attention of the town, and obviously many people are concerned, and it's, it's always good to acknowledge their concern and come out with what, what's being done and, and how it's being done, which you're proposing. So, Trustee Downey, I would only make a recommendation, and I recommend it to all that, the way the meeting is going and the tone, I think we should keep it apolitical, just stick to the issues, as opposed to going back and forth and pitter-patter, I think, Trustee Downey, it's, it's great to put a statement out, however, I wouldn't, there was a lot of political statements in your statement, so I recommend you end it and just keep to the issues and the facts of what's being done, and I think it's good to put that out. And I have a question for the trustees, if you could help me with this, was there ever any mention of the water in any trustee meeting in the past, before 2018, that there was any, was there any mention of concern with the water, if you guys could let me know?
The EAB meets every month.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
The EAB meets every month, every year we get a report on our water quality that is sent out, it's put on the website for everyone to see. That's a standard thing in all municipalities, including Garden City, every year we cross water standards.
So, we put out, first of all, the, if we're talking about this particularly emerging contaminant, that was brought to the, all New York state water providers in December of 2018, when this committee met, committee point by the governor was put together to look at this particular emerging contaminant. So, prior to that, through that time, and up till today, and tomorrow too, our water meets or exceeds all federal and state standards that we are charged with. I forgot to say that in my update earlier. So, the water is safe to drink, Mr. Sal, and all the people on this call and in this room, it has always been safe to drink, it meets the standards. Mr. O'Brien, I'd also like to, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. O'Brien, I'd also like to-
With that interruption, let me, please, please, let me finish, if it's okay? With that interruption, that'd be great, and I don't mean to over, you know, speak over you, I just wanted to follow up on that. Mrs. Swazi gave a great report, and thanks for that information. My question wasn't that, my question is actually, did anyone raise your attention before 2018 that there was a possible problem with our water? Not what we're doing since 2018?
No, we ignored that.
No.
Are you, can I just ask Mr. O'Brien, was, are you talking about dioxide specifically or just a general question about water quality?
Just a general, any, I'm not getting into the specifics of the chemicals, was it brought to the, to what it raised your attention?
The answer is no, and every year, by the end of May, I think May 31st, we have to put out an annual report that's required by state law as well, which, which puts out all of our pumpage, it talks about all our treatment, and in fact, the last two, if not three years, Mr. Simler has been asking even the raw data that goes into that testing, which I've been providing, placing on the website as well, so, it's all above law, transparent, it's dictated by law, just like that deferral letter was a compliance issue, we cannot deviate or have opinions on what we do in regards to water.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask confirmation if it was ever brought to your attention by anybody in town or environmental committees at the base of the city?
No. Are we talking about 1.4 dioxide specifically or other issues?
No, no, no.
This is no.
No.
I just want to get it on record, if that, if it was ever brought to your attention, that's all.
Mr. O'Brien, can I, are you finished?
I understand your question.
Mr.? Wait, wait, Lou.
By the way, I'm not, I'm not accusing, I'm just asking.
No one's thinking that you're kidding, I understand what you're doing, you're trying to make it like we're coming down on you, I, yeah, it's great to see you finally at a meeting, but what I want to talk about is-
I can't answer you, though.
What is the exact, what is the exact question that you're asking? You're saying, has anyone talked about the water, or have we discussed the water before 2018? The answer is-
Yeah, did, did anyone-
Have you ever-
It's, it's, my question just repeated, and again, just, just from my own knowledge, because I'm trying to learn, and I'm learning a lot tonight, which I appreciate, great presentations, what I wanted to ask was, did anybody ever bring to your attention, whether from an environmental committee or otherwise a citizen in our town, that there is concern over the quality of the water, not, not particular chemicals?
As was stated, we get a report every year, and there are things in the report which we, we are aware of and try to address, but when water meets standard, part of the problem is standards, what does that mean, safe, standards? There are different standards all over the place, every state, every local municipality who has a water system can establish standards, there's no EPA standard, for example, for 1.4 dioxide. So, safe is not an accurate term, it doesn't really mean anything. But our, our water system is tested all, daily, right, Val?
I think it's tested about 45 times a week, it's tested at our, at the raw wells, the water that comes out of the well, raw, we test it at different states of treatment, we test it in the schools, we test it in some of our DPW buildings, and we test it in some homes, that are all on a list approved by the Nassau County Department of Health, which is the regional arm of the New York State Department of Health. And if we fail a test, we, we have to retest it, and if we fail it again, we have to put notices out. I can't remember in any of my time here, ever doing that, because we always meet or exceed the standards, and we only test what we need to test for. There might be other tests that are caught up in those things that come out, but what, what we're challenged to mitigate or remediate or remove from the water is dictated by New York State Department of Health, and it's overseen by Nassau County Department of Health, and all of our testing go through a, to a state certified lab, and our, our operators are trained, and we have operators who are with us for 34, 36 years, 16 years, in the process training, someone now, plus we have our regional consultants. There were more eyeballs on this water system every day before dioxide than you can imagine, it's the most highly regulated thing in the state, and it's the most important utility to any community.
Mr. Swazi, I just hope that-
That's great to hear, and by the way, I'm not accusing whatsoever, I just want to know for my own health benefit, you know?
Well, I can appreciate that, Mr. O'Brien, this is Colleen Foley.
If I, if I can finish, and then the habit is kind of over here. So, the, the, what I was, what I was gonna mention was that, it sounds like you're doing everything, I'm actually trying to help you folks by saying that, you know, it only came to your attention in 2018, so that's very good to hear.
Is that exactly what you mean by that?
See, that, that's my concern, Mr. O'Brien, you're, you're trying to pitch a question here that's politically generated by getting a gotcha moment. This board and prior boards, I have the floor, sir, this, this board and prior boards have done everything they can to comply with state standards, federal standards, community standards to provide safe water to people. So, is your question, has anyone ever asked about water ever at a village meeting? Yes, people ask all the time, and we supply them with the answers we can, the best way we can, with all the information that you just heard we collected. So, I don't appreciate the inference, even as backdoor, backdoor as it is, that somehow this is not transparent. I very much resent that, and I'm gonna ask the mayor to move on to the next question so we can get off this political dud.
No, I, I want to address something, I would like to address something, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. O'Brien, you let me, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. O'Brien, you have not let me speak, Mr. O'Brien, you have not let me speak for three minutes, so let me finally speak, because you, you brought something into this conversation. Mr. O'Brien, you brought something into this conversation, and I could not agree with you more. One of the things you brought into this is you said that there should be not political statements on this. This is all water, this is the water that we drink, that our children drink, that our grandparents drink. I agree with that 100%, and as a matter of fact, when this first topic came up online on Facebook, one of the things that I did was, I posted and I said, please, do not make this a political issue, do not make this a political, a, a, a item that you're gonna push back and forth, and I said, listen, you can disagree with me, you can attack me, you can do whatever you want on any of the subject, do not sit here and start to put concerns that are not correct in there, and the lead, no, no, hold on, Mayor, I'm sorry, I'm gonna respond, no, I'm gonna respond, no, I'm sorry, I want to respond.
No, I'm not holding on, I want you to go on.
And then, I am not gonna be quiet, and then what happened, and then what happened was, at that time, the leader of your group mocked me on Facebook, and then all of your supporters on Facebook continued to make innuendos that this board was misleading the public. So, if you want to stop the political issue, then speak to your leader, and you can look at the posts on Facebook, and you can see it yourself, it never should have gotten to this point, and that's why we have to send out a mailer, and that's why we have to spend the money, because you and your supporters are painting a narrative which is not true.
All right, that's the end of it. All right, thank you for your fine comments. Next speaker.
Agenda items. Agenda items, Mayor, please.
Next speaker. All right, thank you. Let's move on now, please, to agenda items.
Public hearings.
I mean, public hearings. Members of the board, is there a trustee who would like to open the public hearing on the proposed local law regarding parking non-operational vehicles in residential districts? Do I have a motion? Colleen Foley, can I have a second? John Gleyney, all those in favor? That motion posted unanimously. I move to open the public hearing, we're past that, okay. Counsel, would you briefly describe the proposed local law?
Certainly, Mayor. Oversimplified, this proposed local law addresses the issue of what many might characterize as the storage of abandoned cars. It defines the issue by defining the phrase, quote, "non-operational vehicles," close quote, and does so as meaning any vehicle that can't be lawfully driven on the public streets for more than 60 consecutive calendar days or an aggregate of 90 days within any six-month period. And this proposed local law would prohibit such vehicles from being- And this proposed local law would prohibit such vehicles from being parked for longer than ninety consecutive days in a residential district. Mayor, at this time, it would be appropriate for any trustee or member of the public to comment on this proposal, now that we are in the public hearing.
Does any trustee have comments on this? Trustee Tony?
Yeah, just, as, as Mr. B said, it's pretty straightforward. It's really a quality of life type of issue. Quite frankly, just, I don't think it's right if people have junk cars parked in their yard. It's not fair to their neighbors, and that's, that's what this is addressed to.
Thank you. Any other trustee here to comment on this issue? How about the public? Do we have public comments at this time?
Hi, Judy Courtney?
Go ahead.
A couple of questions. So how will this be monitored? Is this, um, how will this be monitored? I'll just ask you that.
Well, it's monitored the way any other, uh, uh, law is. People are looking, go ahead.
Well, I, I, I believe that when there are other ordinances that are associated with your property, unless you get a complaint, right, it is not necessarily enforced or ticketed. So I'm wondering, is there, does a resident have to make a complaint against a neighbor for this to happen? And if they do, what is the fine or associated action?
Well, I, I would think that there, there would be many ways that this would come up, that people who live, live in the area, people who-
Police.
Yes, Mayor, as with other local laws, the violation can come to the attention of the police department in any number of ways. Officers on patrol can see an abandoned vehicle sitting in the same residence day after day. Neighbors can complain. There are any number of ways it can come to attention. The proposed local law provides that the penalty for its violation would be the same as for any other violation of the code, which from recollection, I think, is a thousand dollars a day, but it ultimately is up to the Village Justice to set the fine.
So is there a warning that goes to a resident or anything, or how does that work? Not that I have a car in my driveway.
Generally, I think Garden City's Police Department, although I'll defer to the Commissioner on this, is a department that operates on a philosophy of compliance where possible, rather than strict enforcement. So there is a general philosophy of trying to bring citizens into compliance before full enforcement takes place, though obviously that's a discretionary area for the Commissioner. Commissioner, do you wish to comment on that?
Yes, that's what we normally do with the Village Code. We normally, on something like that, issue a warning, and then we go back after a certain period of time, and see if there was compliance. Sometimes we will work with the building department, too, for the mayhem bubble or instances. So a lot of times, our investigations, they're compliant, so we'll be able to find each other also.
Yes, the Building Department would also have authority to pursue a complaint in this area.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any further comments on this issue? Does any trustee then, want, wish to move to close the public hearing? Trustee Delaney, and a second, please. Trustee Macrinos, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and so that moved unanimously.
Can we get the vote? Can we vote on it?
All right, and now?
Can we vote on it, Peter, or Louis?
Does any trustee wish to, to move the passage of the proposed local law? Trustee Jordan, and a second, please. Trustee Hire, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and then passed unanimously.
Wait, is it Louis chiming? I can't hear Louis.
I did. My, my mute button was like, oh boy, but yeah, I said aye. I'll, I'll tell you if I, if I object. I actually have a question. Did we ever talk about this since 2015? You know what, I'll save it for later.
Oh, man.
Okay. I think we're on. All right, the local law then is passed. We're going to move to the second public hearing, and it's a proposal. Uh, there is a, is there a trustee who would like to open the public hearing on the proposed local law regarding storage of construction materials and construction equipment on residential property? Okay, is there someone? Uh, trustee Foley, and a second. Trustee Hire, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so I move to open this public hearing. Mr. B, would you please briefly describe the proposed local law?
Certainly, Mayor. This proposed local law would regulate the long-term storage of construction materials and equipment on residential properties. Construction materials is proposed to be defined as any material used or related to a construction project, and construction equipment is defined as the equipment and supplies commonly used in connection with construction and improvement projects. Storage of such material and equipment would be prohibited on residential property for longer than nine months after a homeowner completes a project, typically the kind of project that would get a certificate of completion from the Building Department, or for more than thirty days in any ninety-day period if there is no project that was completed, or for more than an aggregate of forty-five days in any calendar year. However, these prohibitions would not apply if the material or equipment is being stored in a neat, orderly, and safe fashion as determined by the superintendent of buildings. Mayor, if you wish, at this time, it would be appropriate for any trustee or member of the public to comment on the proposal.
So do I have any comments from the trustees on this issue?
Again, it's, it's just a quality of life thing. I, I think it's important we keep construction equipment and materials out of people's yards. It's not fair to your neighbor. You know, if you've finished your patio, you've got nine months to get rid of it. You know, you can't keep, you know, piles of stone in your yard. It's just not fair to your neighbors. It attracts vermin, it's unsightly, you know, any similar kinds of things, you know. I think Mr. B already mentioned the types of materials. It's, it wouldn't affect anything while you're doing a project, anything you have a permit for up for the village, it doesn't deal with any of that. This is all post-construction, post-building permit stuff.
Okay, any other trustee here to comment on that? Does any member, member of the public have any comments? Unless there are more comments, is there a motion to close the public hearing? Deputy Mayor Bolabro, a second. Trustee Macrinos, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and Louis?
Aye.
Aye, and so there, that passed unanimously. All right, I move, then, can I move, then? Do I have a trustee who wishes to move passes of this proposed law? Trustee Delaney, a second, they have a second on it. Trustee Macrinos, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Louis?
Aye.
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 All right, and so there we have it, the local law is passed. We have a very important third public hearing. Members of the board, there is a trustee who would like to open the public hearing on the proposed police reform and reinvention collaborative plan. All right, do I have somebody who'd like to open that, please? Trustee Hire, and a second. Deputy Mayor Bolabro, next time, Louis. And all of those in favor?
Aye.
And that passed unanimously. And, uh, so, Commissioner Jackson, would you please briefly comment on the proposed plan?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to thank Major Vaye, Trustee Hire, and all the members of the Garden City Police Reform and Reinvention Collaborative Plan Committee for the commitment, ideas, observations, and assistance they gave to this department in developing this plan. This has been posted on the Village's website for viewing and comments since January 22nd. Would like to recognize the following Garden City Reform Committee members. Again, Mayor Tresia Tvei, Trustee Moncler, Reverend Earl Hoop from the Church of the Garden, ADA, Aliyah Jambo from the Bureau Chief of the DA's Office, Alan Schwartz, Defense Attorney, Lawrence Quarantino, the EPOA, Don Brody, the CPOA, Nancy Vanette, the State's POA, Nettos Denise, the WPOA, Ralph Swazie, Village Administrator, Inspector Stephen Bronn, and myself. I would also like to thank Nassau County Executive Laura Kirman and Police Commissioner Patrick Brighter, including me, and Nassau County's Police Reform Initiative, PACT, that puts, stands for Police Community Trust, which includes various representatives from Nassau government agencies, the Legal Aid Society, as well as members representing the community. The information received during these meetings will also operate as assistance in developing the Garden City Plan. As stated in my introduction in the Garden City Plan, the Village participated in this collaborative effort while conducting a field review of the Garden City Police Policies and Procedures. As a result of changes in legislation and input from the Garden City Reform Committee Impact, the Garden City PD made modifications to its policy and procedures outlined in the plan. The plan reflects the Village of Garden City and the Police Department's commitment to serving all the people both equally and fairly, while applying the guidance presented by the state to the existing policies and procedures in effect, which gratifying to realize that a great deal of the improvements in standards and practices this process was created and achieved was already in place. The Village is committed to improvement upon its strong foundation and will continue to promote fairness, transparency, trust, and legitimacy by working towards reducing racial disparities. Several comments were received regarding the Garden City Police Reform Plan on the, on the email listed on the plan, on the webpage. The majority of these processes were supportive of the plan, two contained statements and questions, not suggestions, and one email contained the People's Plan was submitted by a representative of Long Island United to transform police and community safety. At this time, vote for questions.
All right, so do any trustees have a comment or a question? Trustee Tony?
Yeah, just a couple questions or things to think about. Can you address, you know, whether or not we should implement some plan, short-term, long-term, regarding camera usage on the police?
Yes, there's something we are looking into. Nassau County has, is starting negotiations, they have one of their unions have already approved it. They have brought in a consultant, and they're looking into a plan. They already kind of got to the other villages that, once they went to plan, that they would maybe be reaching out to us, so we can join in, which would be a little more, would work better, because we have the same courts, the same DA's, and probably be much more cost-effective, and be a proven commodity.
Thank you.
Any other trustee interested in, trustee Hire?
I'd like to thank Commissioner Jackson and Inspector Bronn, and the rest of the committee, and all the work that they did, and all the good work that they did on, on putting this plan together. So, thank you, and I know it's a lot of work and a lot of sweat, and it shows. Thank you.
You know, as the mayor, I would like to say that I was very proud to have this committee. We have been working very closely with the Nassau County Police, with Supervisor Kirin. We have all been sharing ideas, and we are trying to come up with a, a smooth operation in areas that have been difficult, and it was a very, very worthwhile experience, maybe one of the best committees I've ever sat on in my life. And I was a little disappointed, I'll be honest with you, that we had the opportunity for you, if you wanted, and also all of our residents. We, we put it on the website and encouraged comments. We had five, I think, about five comments. I know, but they were all very, very complimentary. I know that you think that we have a great police force, but I thought that maybe you might get hooked on one of the ideas in the text, and I want to discuss it further. Nevertheless, it was a very profitable committee. Many of the people on that committee, especially the rector from the Church of the, what is that, the Church of the-
Church of the Garden.
Yeah, the Garden, he was very, very, very helpful. He gave a lot of insight into how the other half of the equation is thinking, and I think that we made good progress there, and it was great, I think, very, very remarkable. That Commissioner Jackson was asked to be on the committee by the supervisor, Mrs. Kirin, and they came up with a lot of, you know, perhaps new ways of looking at things, and I think on both sides, both parties want to get along better and want to have a more perfect collaboration, I might say, and it was, I just think that it was a very, very interesting experience. Now, do any members of the public have any comments? Any members of the public?
Yes, Tom O'Brien? I just wanted to, I know I speak for everybody in this meeting, and our people, all our residents, just thanking the police for outstanding job, I'm very proud of the work they do in keeping us safe and putting ourselves at risk every day. It's terrific. So I echo everything that's been said, Mayor, by all the trustees and yourself, and just a thank you.
Most welcome. Anyone else, any other resident here to comment?
If I may speak, my name is Daniel McElroy, I live in 138 Newton Road. I apologize if I speak quickly, I'm trying to get a lot of information into a short period. The first thing I want to do is just, I appreciate all the work that Commissioner Jackson's done. I do want to refute the fact that the pact has lied to the constituents of the community, and they said they did not have a plan, when in fact they did, and then published it, and many of those members then resigned from the pact, so I should make that clear on the record. I am coming to you on behalf of the Long Island United to Transform Police and Community Safety, and I ask that all departments involved, and each of you, the trustees and the mayor, read the People's Plan in its entirety. The People's Plan comprehensively covers and recommends that non-criminal crises, mental health, substance abuse, and houselessness be handled by behavioral health specialists, recommends that non-police traffic enforcement be installed, and road design, which reduces traffic violations specifically focusing on any pretextual stops, adding a strong civilian complaint review board, CCRB, to oversee complaints against police personnel, a police inspector general with independent powers to audit and investigate the police department, passing a police statistics and transparency stat act, based on the New York State Act, which passed June 2020, legislative oversight of the police, that until such a CCRB and inspector general's officer created, all complaints be handled by internal and internal affairs unit, not the precinct, passage of the Right to Know Act, which requires officers to identify themselves fully to an individual at the beginning of an encounter, that personal liability insurance be mandated for all officers, where the department would pay the average premium, and reimburse officers whose actions lowered their premiums to below the average as take-home pay, while requiring officers whose actions raised their premiums above the average to pay such a difference, the creation of a comprehensive and academically rigorous community survey about the state of policing, which includes those who have interacted with the police, along with a representative sample of residents, that the Garden City Police Department clearly define use of force, that all non-designated crimes and hate incidents be classified and tried-to-hate crimes in line with New York State law, as well as mapped, and such data provided accessibly to the public, development of a policy that provides safe and respectful treatment for gender expansive, i.e. gender not performing, transgender as opposed to cisgender, and/or intersex people, the development and implementation of a comprehensive language access program that ensures access to non-English speaking people, and provides transparent data regarding the usage of bilingual resources, that there is a specific focus on authentic trust and legitimacy within communities, and within the community and surrounding communities, implementation of the best and most up-to-date practices in leveraging technology and social media platforms to promote full transparency in these and all areas of policing and community safety and well-being, the implementation of a set of policies and practices that ensure diversity and accountability within hiring and promotion of comprehensive training that focuses on the needs of communities in the 21st century, the implementation of policies and practices that ensure the mental well-being of police officers throughout their career and ideally on a very regular basis, and finally, the development and implementation of a permanent equity and safety task force, as the mayor mentions, it was a very positive thing that she spoke on. So I ask, and the coalitions ask, that there is a permanent equity and safety task force which continues the work of New York AO 203, by continually reviewing current police force deployments, strategies, policies, procedures, and practices, and providing evidence-based recommendations to perennially pursue that end-to-quote, to reduce, quote, "racial inequities in policing," quote, end quote, to better address the particular needs of communities of color, to promote public safety, ensure community engagement, and foster trust. Again, I really do encourage all of you to read the entire plan, it's three hundred and ten pages. to read the entire plan, it's 310 pages. We also have some. And I believe that the Garden City Plan is lacking in many of those areas, so I don't want to comment specifically. But I did provide that via email and I provided my own email and my phone number to be reached out to to talk about any of those specific recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you for your comments.
Anybody else?
Unless, are there further comments?
Hi, Sista?
Go ahead.
Sorry, Judy Courtney, three, two, one. A couple of questions on this, Daniel, thanks for that. I don't know if we've been 300 pages, but I'll give it a try, so thank you. I do, I hadn't thought of it before, but I will say I do support the recommendation specifically that Daniel made about this committee, which I think worked really well and was a committee of residents, right? A volunteer committee of residents, of which we had many. And this was a great example of how we use our resident expertise, maybe meeting, I don't know whether it's quarterly or twice a year or something to review. You know, we had these recommendations in place. How are we doing against them? So I would totally support an ongoing continuation, I guess is the right word, of this particular committee. It seems like it works so well. So that was one thing I would, I hadn't thought of, but I think that was a great idea. My other question is for Commissioner Jackson, and I have not read this, so I apologize. I know it's on the website, I just haven't had a chance to look at it. Could you just comment, are there any one or two or three, whatever it is, suggestions that came up out of all of these discussions in terms of change or doing things differently that you think would be interesting for us to hear about? And as I said, I haven't read it, so I apologize for that, but I'd be interested in your perspective on that.
Well, a couple of things. First, we have made the plan that we will have a community council meeting. So we plan to continue the trend that we started. A couple of things were brought up. It's a very comprehensive plan, I think it's 160 pages. But a couple of things we brought up. The, in fact, I actually read Dan's 300 and some odd pages. It's very well-written. And there are a lot of ideas we have incorporated, like you said. One of the things is the mobile crisis. When we talk to, we go to mental health emergencies, that's, that is an emerging idea that people have different views on. While working with Nassau County, as also I'm the executive director of the Nassau County Chiefs that represent all the villages, we are moving forward to utilize the mobile crisis more often. They have, the mortgage doubled. They are telling us that they'll be mortgage doubling the amount of personnel, so we'll have them available. They're also going to teach our dispatchers how to get, talk to the people who call, either the person suffering a mental health crisis or somebody reporting it. There's a lot of aspects to mental health crisis. And also, I just, and I found out, which was surprising to me to some degree, our ambulance, NYU ambulance, is highly qualified in responding to that. And we have two upgrades all-time one paramedic, the 1EMT, and they're also very well-trained in responding to this, as well as us. We have a lot of training that we're doing. That's another that came up with Nassau County. We're doing a landmark training, procedural justice, and anti-bias training, de-escalation, and all that stuff. We also, we have, we brought in a vendor that does, he's a nationwide vendor, but also helps us with that training. And we also do it in-house. So there's a lot of different things going on. There's more awareness that we're doing with a lot of stuff. And I think it's working out well. It's opened up my eyes a lot. I've been around almost 40 years and in the village 36 years. And I will say that as we did over the summer with the crowd control, I think we're a different department than we were 20 years ago. We're very passionate. I'm not saying we weren't passionate 20 years ago, but we're much more passionate. We understand free speech. We allowed, you know, we allowed the protests and I thought we interacted very well. And one of the committee members even commented on that. So that's, those are just a couple of things that surprised me and or enlightened me, I should say, while we're going through this process. And everybody has good ideas. The Reverend, like the mayor said, the Reverend brought up good ideas. Trustee Hire brought his expertise in there. All the property ownership association was, it was enlightening to hear what other people have to say about the limited community that I work for.
And the other thing is that it can be exciting to take a good look at yourself every once in a while and see if you like the picture that you're looking at and maybe try to readjust it just a little. I think one of the more interesting topics that we discussed was destabilization, where police officers would work to calm things down, no matter what the crime, try to get a more stable emotional situation going there for, instead of, you know, a lot of wildness. There was, there was material in there about how we should modify our computer reports to tell us right away some of the information that was important to us in this search. And I think, I just think that it got us thinking. To sit there with, there was a lawyer from the Estates, there was a lawyer from the East, there was a lawyer from the Central, and they, you know, their experiences came through and they had good suggestions that we, and we held on to some of them. I know that the pastor from the Church in the Garden said that he would like us to try to have a person of color on the police force, if we did not already have that. And it just, I think the lady who, from the center of the Estates had some good suggestions about how to deal with people a little bit differently. It was just very, very interesting. And it was a very productive experience. And so we wanted you to know about it. And I think that it would be carried on. I think that it was a very good idea. All right, so is it?
I actually had, just my question, Mayor. Sorry. So what are the, what are the next steps? I have this process to, for feedback and then where, maybe, you know, the group here would like to hear what the kind of next steps are about this.
Well, it's the, the comment period was, has gone on. I mean, this is, we're going to hopefully accept the plan here.
The plan, I believe, has been posted since January on the website. The comment period has been since January to comment on the plan. The number of comments have been received, and that culminates in tonight's public hearing. Once this public hearing is closed, the board is free, should it choose to do so, to adopt the plan.
So the next step is adoption tonight? And then, it sounds like, you know, the commissioner and the groups are still curious about changes. This isn't just a one-time thing, correct? This is something that's ongoing. Am I somewhat correct in that, Commissioner?
Yes, sir. It's a plan, and plans always evolve. And that's why we plan to meet again. I'm also, even with the Nassau County group, we're continuing the meeting. I actually met, no, I put down 12 times here, but this week will be number 15. And we're going to keep meeting with our group, and we're also going to continually keep meeting with the county groups. So it's an evolving process. Just things change as time moves on. So we're ready and we're flexible to make the changes.
That's great. It definitely sounds like, you know, you've got a great attitude and a great approach. So thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If I may for one moment, I appreciate Commissioner's statement. May I have one second to just add one? I know I spoke long, but is that all right?
No.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to really recommend that the vote is not made tonight if the trustees have not yet read the plan. I implore you to read the entire plan because it goes into far more detail than I could possibly get into and is really inclusive of the entire community, the police, and making that trust and safety. So I ask that. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else? Any other comments from our residents? Unless there are more comments, I'm going to ask if there's a motion to close this public hearing. Trustee Delaney and second, trustee Donnie? And all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that was the unanimous vote. Louis, yes? Louis?
Yes, I did say.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. All right, so I move that the public hearing be closed. And I'm wondering, does any trustee wish to move passage of this proposed plan?
Aye.
Trustee Delaney, trustee Hire, and all of those in favor? Aye, say aye.
Aye.
And a right pass unanimously. All right? And that plan is adopted. So thank you for your cooperation, our residents, trustees, executives there, people who worked for the village, who argued with us this evening. It is good work. It's, and it's work that we should take seriously and continue doing.
Mayor, we're actually running a little bit behind on doing so, but may I respectfully suggest that we come out of recess as a Board of Assessment Review and finish the grievance night.
I think the next thing I'm going to do is ask you to approve the minutes of February 4, 2021.
Mayor, rather than the minutes, may I respectfully suggest that we go directly to the grievance day?
The what?
The grievance day material.
Okay.
Or grievance hearing.
Oh, grievance hearing, okay. May I have a motion?
I believe we're now out of recess and Mayor directing your attention to page two of the material I provided.
Okay, if you have that, yes.
Right where it says after the regular board meeting, but really targeting 9:00 PM, you'll find your materials saying what we're doing now.
Right, after the regular board meeting. You have it. Thanks.
If you can pick up from there. Thank you.
Okay, what we're doing now is a bit different from what we normally do because we are simultaneously, while we are having our board meeting, we are in the middle of grievance day. Mr. B., why don't you inform the audience as to exactly what we're doing concurrently with our board meeting?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just remind the board that you are simultaneously sitting this evening as a Board of Assessment Review. Today is tax grievance day, and it is the day on which those individuals who wish to protest the assessment which has been placed on their house may do so. There are procedures that they would have had and should have followed even prior to this evening. But today is the last day to make a presentation to the Board of Assessment Review to correct what the homeowner may perceive to be an erroneous assessment. And the requirement under any law is that this board will be sitting until 9:30 this evening to hear any applications for assessment review. Mr. Donato, who is the village assessor, I believe is also joined us on this meeting by Zoom or whatever platform we're using. And Mr. Donato, do you wish to add anything to that? And for those of you who may not be acquainted with him, he, as I said, is the village assessor.
Thank you for speaking. No, I believe that you covered it. Thank you.
Each of the grievance petitioners has submitted a form, which is a state-promulgated form, entitled the Complaint on Real Property Assessment. I understand in most cases, the complaint forms submitted were only completed in part, and certain information requested on these forms was not supplied on most of the complaint forms. In particular, the information relating to income, expenses, and sales data has not been supplied. Is that correct, Mr. Donato?
That is correct.
For those petitioners who have supplied the required information, the Board of Assessment Review, this board, sitting as a Board of Assessment Review, must review and advise those petitioners of any reductions in their assessed value. As to those petitioners who have failed to provide any information or who have provided insufficient information in support of their complaints, I suggest that this board find that it does not have before it sufficient information to make a proper determination as to whether those assessments are illegal, erroneous, or unequal. A resolution would therefore be in order to allow those petitioners who have failed to provide any information or who have provided insufficient information to file with this board, sitting as a Board of Assessment Review, on or before 3:30 PM on March 11, 2021, any additional information supporting their alleged illegal, erroneous, or unequal assessments.
Thank you, Kent, counsel. Do I have such a motion? Trustee Delaney and a second, trustee Macrinus. And all of those in favor, say aye. And that passed unanimously. Let's see.
Approve the motion.
Okay, we're getting there.
I believe, Mayor, that since we have now been sitting concurrently as a Board of Assessment Review and a Board of Trustees, and the four hours have transpired, it would now be appropriate to adjourn that portion of the meeting, that is, the meeting of the Board of Assessment Review. So if there's a motion to do that and adjourn the meeting of the Board of Assessment Review until March 11.
All right, so, trustee Hire and a second, please. Trustee Delaney and all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and so that passed unanimously. And so now?
That having been done, Mayor, it would be appropriate to now return to the main agenda, and you believe we are starting a motion to approve minutes.
Yes. All right, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of February 4, 2021? Trustee Macrinus and a second? Trustee Hire and all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and everybody is in communion on this? And Louis? I think Louis might, I don't know. All right, and now may I have a motion to approve the minutes of February 8, 2021, which was a special meeting? Trustee Foley and trustee Macrinus is a second on that. And may we have a show of hands for support? And Louis, are you with us? All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passed unanimously, I think. All right, now, one of the things I'd like to do right now is talk about the fact that we are going to add something to the agenda. Members of the board has come to my attention that staff would like to add certain items to our agenda relating to the replacement of a boiler. Mr. Spuzzie, would you briefly describe the proposed items?
Thank you, Mayor, trustees. So as the board's aware, on Friday, February 12, we had a catastrophic failure of the boiler at the DPO yard. It heats the entire complex. Deputy Superintendent Dominic Stanko called me that evening. The person who maintains the boilers for the last 26 years couldn't repair it. Dominic called a second plumber who, he hung up the phone with me, a guy named Chris. He said he couldn't repair it either and it wasn't worth fixing. I then texted John McElroy, third-generation plumber from McElroy Plumbing. I asked for his best steam boiler guy. They showed up on President's Day and John himself went there to put eyeballs on it. Dominic met him there on his day off and he said this thing is not worth repairing. We also brought down on Tuesday, the first day back in the office, we brought down the manufacturer's representative of our high-efficiency boiler out of Slicky Hollow. And he was there, one of his plumbers is an old Navy guy who worked on steam boilers his whole life. And they all concluded the same thing. So tonight's agenda items are twofold. Because of the cold weather, the snowstorms, the fact that our men are in the central garage working and we have to keep the building warm, we put an emergency request out to get a boiler. We asked the second plumber, who got us a price of $60,000 through the second week in April. in April, and we asked McElroy Plumbing to locate a boiler of the proper size over in Siocic, at an expense of $14,500. We only plan on using it for two weeks if you fall through with the purchase of new boiler. So it's $14,500 plus $2,357.50 for two weeks. That is after the first week. So we'll get three weeks of use for about $19,000. This, the, so it's a transfer of funds and awarding of that to engaging McElroy Plumbing, who is on the state contract, by the way, they are on competitively bid New York State contract. Item C and D are a transfer to purchase a new high-efficiency boiler. We got a price for McElroy of $160 and change. The other, the second plumber got us prices for new boiler, they came back with a price of $90,000. So we feel that the McElroy plumber gave us a better price, they're on the state contract, we don't have to update, and I'd like you to approve these transfers and award these contracts. I also want to point out that I want to thank Don McStanko, I don't know if Don was on the phone on Zoom tonight, but we communicated throughout the entire thing, including, I went down there and talked to the plumbers on Tuesday as well. I also want to point out that village clerk Karen Altman, this is an insurable claim, she contacted our insurance company. I was on the call, but she was on it with Mr. Stanko. I believe, based on the information she provided, that these claims will be covered in part or in whole for the new boiler and possibly for the rental. We do have a $10,000 deductible, but that would be welcome news. Nonetheless, we need to replace this boiler. And the new boiler, I might add also, the old boiler, the way it failed is because of the way it was built too. It's hard to repair because it's one unit welded together, all the pipes inside. The new unit is a sectionalized boiler, so if there was a catastrophic failure of one part, the whole boiler wouldn't be thrown away, you could repair the sections.
Okay. Is there a trustee willing to move to suspend the rules so that these items might be added?
Mayor, I moved it to hold speed temporarily suspended.
And a second, please. Deputy Mayor Boldbrook, and all of those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and so that passed unanimously. The items having been added to our agenda, is there a trustee willing to move passage of the following items? A transfer of $20,000 to Central Garage Maintenance Plant, account OA 1640 to 4030 from contingent, account OA 1990 to 4,000, to cover the emergency installation and rental of a boiler at the DPW Yard Central Garage. B, a resolution authorizing the engagement of McElroy Plumbing Incorporated, Seacliff Glen Cove, for emergency installation and rental of a boiler at the DPD Yard Central Garage. Cost for total hookup and disconnect is $14,500. Weekly rental rate after the first week is $2,375.50. McElroy Plumbing Services are available under the competitively bid New York State contract, this comes from, is on the operating budget. C, a transfer of $165,000 to Central Garage Equipment, account OA 1640 to 2,000 from judgmental claims, account OA 1930 to 4,000 for the purchase of a new boiler at the DPW Central Garage. D, a resolution authorizing the engagement of McElroy Plumbing, Seacliff Avenue Glen Cove, to cover the purchase and installation of permanent new boiler for the DPW Garage. I note the cost of $160,132.50, includes all required labor materials and equipment. McElroy Plumbing Services are available under the competitive bid New York State contract, and this cut is on the operating budget. Can I have someone to move that?
I'll move that.
Trustee Delaney, and a second, trustee Hare, and all of those in favor, say aye. Louis? Louis. And that, thank you. And is there any further discussion on these items? If there are none, all of those in favor signify by saying aye. We did that, the ayes unanimous.
I just have one question.
Okay.
Are we able to get a warranty on this one? That's one of the things that we were looking into.
So there's a normal warranty of, I believe, 12 or 18 months on parts and labor, but the new boiler is, does have the extended warranty. I didn't get a call, a chance to call the contractor, but they do, will provide the information. It'll be an additional cost, but I believe it can be warranted a minimum of 10 years, and maybe up to as far as 20. The person who services these contracts for the region, when I was there with him, he said 20 years, but I'm going to find out from the homeowner who's giving us the specs. It just wasn't included in the documents on that. But I would come back to this board after installation, ask for the extended warranty.
All right. Can we have a motion?
Think you're ready for the consent calendar?
Yeah, I can too. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar? Do we have to say, we don't have to say anything about?
That is with the exception of item 11, which I believe has been removed from the agenda.
Yes. And all of those?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Okay, trustee Donnie, and a second, deputy mayor Boldbrook, and all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that passed unanimously. And now we are going to turn to citizens' comments on non-agenda items, limited to four minutes per person. Thank you. Is there someone who wishes to speak? All right, I don't think so. So may I have a motion to adjourn this meeting? Is there someone?
No.
I'll make the motion.
He can't do that, can he?
Yes, he can. Thanks, Louis. It was trustee Delaney, he had his hand up.
I know, I, Delaney didn't speak up, so hey, man.
Well, he did, he did. But only trustee Delaney seconded.
Okay, let's see. Okay, trustee Delaney will second that, and all of those in favor, say aye, and that was unanimous, and the evening is over.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.